Boat out with these restrictions.
No motor.
One minute.
Yep.
I could have flown my flag and you could have done pledge of allegiance. I didn't think about it. Sorry.
It's okay. Seven o'clock, we're gonna call tonight's meeting to order.
At work.
Skip the pledge of allegiance. Suzie, can you call roll, please?
Councilmember Canfield.
Here.
And so member Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Present.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I'm here. Motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll support.
Any discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Campio.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, citizen discussion for items not on the agenda. Push the raise your hand button and we'll recognize you.
If you're on phone, it's star nine.
Anybody, Mike?
Nope.
All right. Moving to whole business. Number four, letter A, 2020 Street Improvement Project Award.
Hello, Dan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you recall, back in November, we had our engineers, Williams and Works. They're putting together a street paving project for Lowell. Our project started with the major streets of Howard Street and Suffolk Street, and the local street of Elizabeth. This would be from Hudson to their ends at the Western Terminus at the schools. These all asked of three streets access to this public school properties. In December, we added the Riverside Drive project from the DVA area to the, to the list. Williams and Works developed the plans, put together specifications, and helped us go out for bid. An important part of the process was the development of the work schedule. The streets are important connectors to the public school. To avoid the school year, we specified in the project documents, part of the project is after June first with completion by August fifteenth. Those are the dates of, of we were given for school being out of session. We opened the bids of the project on April eighth and ten proposals. The bids range from a low of $379,000 to a high of $528,000. Engineer estimate for the project was $513,000. Dual bids are CL Trucking for Maonia for $378,771 and 20 cents. USA Earthworks from Martin, Michigan, $86,149.75. By review of the bids, CL Trucking indicated they would complete the project by September thirtieth and could not commit the completion anytime sooner. This does not meet our project specified schedule to have the work substantially completed before the school year is scheduled to begin. Second lowest bid is from USA Earthworks. Their bid meets the completion requirements. Williamson Works obtained a list of references from USA Earthworks and looked into a few of their projects. Williamson Works did not receive any negative feedback from the references they checked on. It's my recommendation that the Lowell City Council approve the 2020 Street Improvement Project bid from USA Earthworks Martin, Michigan, for a cost of $386,149.75 and authorize the mayor to sign the documents. Last week, Thursday, the DVA agreed to pay their portion of the project, which from this amount would be about $80,000.
Is there any way that they can get started sooner now that school is done?
That's something that once we get them on board, we're gonna talk to them about. I don't know. It depends on their schedule. If they're not super busy, they might want to get in here and get out quicker.
Yeah. Sure. All right, any questions for Dan?
Um, go ahead, Cliff.
Well, no, you're talking.
Okay, the I didn't see a warranty looking in their proposals. What is there a warrant, Dan, for the work done?
Typically, the warranty is a one-year warranty. We did not classify the, the big warranty that state makes us do for two million dollar projects.
Right.
Only that category.
Okay, thank you.
My too, this project is just to take off the existing asphalt, take care of any gravel issues beneath, make sure there's, and if there's a minimum amount of gravel, I think it was six or eight inches, I forget which, that's part of the project to make sure we have enough gravel so it holds up so we don't get the dips that we currently have, and then putting the asphalt back down.
Daniel, right. It did have six inches in it, in the bed.
Okay. Six or eight, so.
Cliff, that was, I had two questions. I'm kind of new to the road thing. I, I, when I saw the spread of the bids, but they're all bidding on the same specifications from Williams and Works, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the other question I had was that there was a, I think at the end of your memo, it said something about providing the city with the removed pavement millings, and that would actually cost us?
Yes, it will. A, a lot of these contractors use those materials themselves or take gravel issues on roads if they have another project.
Okay.
My thought on it was, if they're gonna come in with a milling machine and grind it up and take it off, we'd be interested to have those.
Yeah.
Come in with their loaders and just scoop it all off in chunks, I don't want it. It's no use to us. So that's something we'd have to talk to them about, see how that's gonna shake out before we even want to.
Thank you.
Anything else for Dan? All right, look for a motion then on his recommendation for the USA Earthworks bid.
I make a motion, we approve the contract with USA Earthworks.
I'll support.
All right, any other discussion on it? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
All right, back to Dan again for the 2020 Street Improvement Project Engineering.
One of the things of a successful project is oversight on the project. Having people out there making sure that the gravel's the right depth, for the asphalt getting put in properly, compaction's taking place. Dr. Williams and Works about having that performed for us, and they gave us a quote to do this. You know, it's, it's all the work associated with the oversight of the project. Contract documentation, getting the, the insurances and everything put together, completion of the book, construction observation during the work, and then taking care of any issues that arise, and then completion of, sure the pay items are all correct. They're also gonna coordinate the material testing. This isn't a hundred percent of the time being out there, but it's going to be out there a hundred percent of the time when the asphalt's going down, and then a, a few hours during the week that, I want to think it was thirty or something like that. Dave can remind me what it was, but, but to be out there when necessary to make sure everything's going together properly. I'll still be around. I still plan to be out there as much as I can. That's something I do like to do is go out there and make sure we're getting our, our project put together properly and to help with questions to be available for that. Because they always arise. We try to take care of these projects to the best of the abilities that we have, but things pop up. So they, I want to make sure we're out there covering that. So Williams and Works has indicated they can do all the construction engineering administration and materials testing work for a cost not to exceed $37,900. Material testing work, such as compact testing, asphalt sample and testing, concrete testing, et cetera, will be performed by a subcontractor coordinated through Williams and Works. It's my recommendation that the Lowell City Council approve the 2020 Street Improvement Project Construction Engineering Services with Williams and Works, as outlined in their scope of services dated April thirteenth, 2020, for the amount of $37,900. Last Thursday, DDA agreed to pay their portion, which determined to be about $7,800 towards the engineering services.
Any questions for Dan on that? Marty?
Uh, the $37,900, does that include the, the cost of the testing?
Yes. Okay. Because I didn't see that anywhere in there that they were picking that cost up.
Marty, on the very last page, they have $5,000 in there for material testing allowance.
Okay, then I missed it.
And thirty-two-nine is actually the construction.
Yep.
Greg, did you have anything or?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Anything else for Dan?
No, I believe the hundred eighty-four hours they have over the six weeks is thirty hours a week, so I, that's quite a bit to be able to keep tabs on that project. I think it's better than what we got last time on our road project.
Okay, I agree.
It helps too that the, one of their engineers doesn't live too far from the project. We can just go knock on his door and get his.
Dave Austin.
Yeah.
All right, then I'll look for that motion to approve the engineering contract then with Williams and Works.
I'll make that motion to approve the contract with Williams and Works for $37,900.
I'll support.
All right, motion in a second. Suzie?
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
The new business, number five, letter A is the Comprehensive Tree Plan. Doc Reagan's with us from the Arbor Board.
Hello, everyone, and like to thank you for, for your jobs at City Council, okay? The time that's put in there, okay? I'm gonna be real brief. Just would like to let you know some of the funds, where we get them from in the past. The Lowell Light and Power Cable Fund, the Look Fund, Lowell Community Fund, and the City General Fund. Some highlights of the Comprehensive Tree Plan, they, they're all divided into zones. It's pretty much kind of maintenance, but some of the highlights, Zone Three, the, I think what, what you guys might refer to as the Oklahoma Property. We're gonna try it out. That's between, I think, the library and the boat ramp. I'm gonna try to put some trees there as well as, as, as needed. Also by the, the library where that dumpster used to be there, and the other thing was, the, the other highlight was gonna be some of the trees that need to be replaced from the windstorm in the fall of 2019 are a priority. And the trees along recre- in Recreation Park that were lost during the storm and the, the fairgrounds. Some of those trees got knocked down from the high wind. So that's, that in a nutshell is a comprehensive tree plan. Some other things I want to talk to, talk to you about. Betten Baker did a, some major landscaping, their project, and we were going to be planting a tree for them. They did their own tree planting and just, we have to reimburse them from what we typically will purchase a tree, which is about 250 bucks, Suzie, so we haven't done that yet. Okay, and then Arbor Day is this Friday. Mayor DeBoer has a proclamation in the, in the tree plan, so thank you for that, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Just would like to thank the board members who do participate from the city would be Perry Beecham, Melissa Spino, Diane Lawere, and Mike DeBoer and Jim Salzwiedel, sometimes whichever one be at the meeting. And, oh, last thing I want to add for the Comprehensive Tree Plan. Can't think of his name now that Dan Zarnicki replaced. He and Dan have been working on replacing some of the overgrown trees on Main Street. Some of them have gotten too big for the, for the, for the, for the size of the sidewalk stuff, so we're in the process of trying to replace some of those with some maybe smaller trees, narrower. Melissa Spino's on the board and she's kind of a certified arborist, so she's got some good ideas, but those are some of the, some of the larger trees just need to be replaced. They're getting too big. Any questions for me at all?
Hey, Jim, I have a question. On the projected budget, you have $6,000. Is that in addition to what we currently have in our account?
Um, if, if we're in, if we're in a budget, sometimes we, as, as the trees are replaced and that fund goes down, I let you guys kind of replace it as you need it. It's nice if it's in the budget because we are required to be a Tree City USA to have, you know, some funds from the city, whether it's for actual tree planting or for maintenance, so it doesn't have to be there. It would be nice if it was in the budget, so if we don't need it, you don't have to give it to us, but we have some other funds that we sometimes can get to our due diligence or do some of our funds from.
Well, as being on the board, I, I understand that that $6,000 will basically give us a negative balance of about $100. So we definitely have some, some money put in the account.
Any other question? Okay.
Anything else for Doc Reagan? All right.
Thank you. Okay, just kids that want to do some online schoolwork, so I'm gonna close out.
Okay. Okay, Jim.
Thank you.
All right, item B to go along with that is gonna be the Arbor Day proclamation. So whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Mike DeBoer, Mayor of the City of Lowell, do hereby proclaim every last Friday in April is Arbor Day in the City of Lowell, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees, woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations, dated this twentieth day of April, the year 2020. So with that, we'll move to item number C, gift from the Stoll Estate. Mike?
Mike?
Yes, sir.
Do we, do we approve the official compensating tree plan for 202021? As a council?
That's a good question. Yes, we probably do. So, uh, that motion then to approve the 20202021 Comprehensive Tree Plan.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Motion in a second, and Doc Reagan's gone. Suzie?
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Good catch, Jim. Thank you. A gift from the Stoll Estate, Michael.
Yes. The City of Lowell will soon be receiving a gift from the estate of Cheryl Ann Stoll. Cheryl Ann Stoll deceased on September first, 2019, and resided at 738 High Street. We have been notified from the executor of the state that the city will receive $78,749 from the sale of her home very soon. There are no exclusions as to what the city could do with the proceeds. However, we have been asked to use a small portion of the funds for some sort of a memorial for the parent, for the deceased parents, George and Esther Stoll, who were involved in Lowell for many years before their passing. I've spoken with the executor, and we are looking at placing a bench at one of our parks to memorialize them. The Public Works Director and I are looking into that as an option. With the remaining funds, I would like to put them towards retirement healthcare payments. We have eight current employees who will be eligible to retire before June thirtieth, 2025. All of them are currently eligible for five years healthcare along with their spouse or until Medicare were to be established. Recently replaced $20,500 from the sale of 2560 bowls into a designated fund. I'm also beginning to pre-fund some, some funds for the employees, so it's not as much of an expenditure to our fund when they actually do retire. By allowing this amount, we'll have close to $100,000 in funds for this, not including the amount set aside for each employee. The use of these funds in this matter would ease potential concerns in the future. I'm recommending the, the City of Lowell City Council use the gifted funds from the Cheryl Ann Stoll Estate to be used for future retirement healthcare of our employees after a small portion has been set aside to memorialize George and Esther Stoll.
Any questions for Mike on that?
I, I have a couple that I'm a little concerned about that we, we put all the funds there at this time, and I didn't know if we could leave it open for a while as we maybe have some other concerns and budget shortfalls that are gonna be happening this year. So I didn't know if we could hold off from actually putting it into that at this point until we really figure out what everything looks like. Just my opinion.
I'm the same. I would, I have a, that's a lot of money to be putting aside when we don't know what's gonna happen in the next
Right.
few months.
Yeah, I, I understand that. My only concern is, is four or five years from now when these costs are gonna be very high, that we have the money, so that's kind of why I said it that way. It was a, it was a one-time cast influx that in my, you know, from, from, from where I sit, I thought the best use of it would be there, but if, if you want to just hold on to the funds and sit it in the fund balance or something like that, I'm fine with that, too.
I just think there's a lot of uncertainty right now into
Oh, there is.
decent amount of money to, I don't know.
Any idea how much a nice bench, are we talking a thousand dollars or?
We were thinking three to $5,000.
Oh, okay.
So we're still north of $72,000, I.
Yeah, so you're thinking some concrete base type bench with a plaque in, in, in the bench itself, other than a wood bench that'll rot in fifty years?
Right. Yeah, we were looking more something of that option. Like I said, Dan and I are still working on it.
There's those ones over here, across the street from me at Richards Park that look really nice. They hold up really well. I believe a couple of them have the plaques on them, and that's where all the donor bricks to surround the play area. So there's a pretty good history over there already. I think that'd be a neat place to throw another bench along with all the other donor benches.
Is there, if we put the money off to the side and we, let's say November, December this year, we need that money, then we can pull it out and do other things other than putting it towards the, the retirement fund, correct?
If that's what you want to do, you could.
Because once we put it in that fund, we can't pull it back out.
Not necessarily true. We have a designated fund in our own accounts. It's not, it wouldn't, I mean, all you'd have to do is just either do a council action or we can do a journal transfer. That's not, that's really not the issue. I mean, I would, I would only go to the, I mean, I've, I've reduced quite a bit of expense, of revenue out of the fund. Hopefully, I'm, I'm being overly aggressive in my prediction, and it won't be an issue, but, but you could put it in that designated fund, and if you needed it, you could pull it out. Or you could just take the money when we get it, and we could just put it in our, in our current fund balance and let it sit there, and we could decide later. It's, it's entirely up to you.
Well, I'd like to see what happens Saturday in our budget.
I was just gonna say that, yeah.
That part of it, and, and I'm not opposed to leaving it, putting it in that fund, and I'm not sure exactly what $100,000 gets us as reassurance in those, those five years for those eight employees. I don't know if it's one year, two years of that, that saves us. I, I don't have enough information with what that $100,000 buys us.
Yeah, it's probably closer to a year, but I've been putting $5,000. This year, I put $5,000 for each employee who was eligible to retire in there, and then I, that's in the budget for the upcoming fiscal year as well. I'm just trying, I know that when this happens, this is gonna be, it's gonna be a huge expense, so I'm trying to prepare for it any way I can now, just trying to be proactive.
Yeah, I can't blame you there. I, you got, we gotta do what we gotta do.
Right, but I, I understand that. I obviously understand the issue.
If, if we put it in that fund, does that help us look better to the state? The, the whole MERS thing?
No, this is separate from that. This is actually, there's, that's, this is OPEB, and with OPEB, we're not triggered by the state. It's, it's, it's our actual MERS pension that was triggered.
Okay.
And $78,000 or $73,000 would really do nothing to that liability.
All right, so, uh, does anybody still want to make the motion to?
Greg's got his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Greg.
Sorry, Greg.
I just did want to make a comment that this lady's, the state was kind enough to give us the money. I, I think it's important to designate at some point where it goes instead of it sucked up into the city fund. They're kind enough to share this windfall with us, and I'd just like to see it earmarked some. They, they know where their money went eventually.
Yeah, for sure. So, um, then we, somebody want to make that motion to designate it to retirement healthcare, or do we want to come back to it after the budget meeting Saturday? See where else there's shortfalls maybe, or if there's another use for it?
Do we know when the money coming?
Should be relatively soon. I talked to the executor about three weeks ago. They were waiting on a couple of things to close out the account, so it should, I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks.
Maybe we could just table this till next.
That's fine.
Okay.
When I first looked at it, I thought, boy, that's not real glamorous, but it is practical. I mean, but I, I would rather we held off and maybe get a better feel for what's coming.
Okay.
Uh, motion then to table gift from the Stoll Estate.
I'll make a. I'll support Cliff.
I'll make a motion to table this gift for the time being.
All right, motion in a second on table, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, we gotta do a roll call vote because it's Zoom. Suzie?
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yeah.
All right, discussion, changes, questions, ideas on any of the monthly reports. Okay, nobody had a board or commission meeting, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I mean, um, the, the chamber had their meeting, and as you can imagine, things are kind of scary for them. They had to cancel Expo. And the reason it's upsetting to Liz is because she gets sponsorship monies for these events, and she's worried that people are gonna say, okay, you canceled it. I want my money back. They had to push back the first three concerts. They've rescheduled those. They start mid-June. Those first three have been pushed back to August. The farmer's market is gonna open later, and frankly, at this point, they're really not sure. And frankly, at this point, they're really not sure what's going to happen with Riverwalk, which is the biggest fundraiser for the chamber all year. So, yeah. That's my report from there.
Anybody else? I know there was some questions already popping up about the youth fair and what's going on there, so people are worried. Mike, city manager's report.
Yes, a couple items. As, as you should have all received today, you should have received your budget. I, I submitted the budget as required by charter today. I will say, this is probably the most difficult budget I've ever prepared in 14 years in city management. But I, I think we were, I think I'm, I'm pretty confident that our, that, that, the, the changes that were made should be able to accommodate us going forward, but these are, you know, at least with revenues, these are best guesses at this point. It could, I'm hoping, I'm hoping I under, I under, I was, I was low on the revenue amount, lower than what it'll actually be, so. But that'll remain to be seen. After our last council meeting, we did, we did tape up the playgrounds, the play equipment. And we, we did, we did that. And we also were working with, we're working with the, we're working with the people who are over $150 delinquent on their bills. It seems like, from what I understand, we're getting a lot of bill payment coming in since we last, since our last council meeting. So we still have some, we still have some delinquent, but we are trying to work with those. And it seems like, from what Amy and Lori are telling me, the payments are coming in pretty well. At our next council meeting, the, we probably will need to discuss how we're going to move forward with some of these COVID-19 issues. I anticipate there's going to be some modifications to the executive orders. And I think that we probably will be devoting time at the next council meeting on that. Tuesday, we held our first labor negotiation with the IBW, the DPW. We, it was, I thought it was a positive meeting. We had a fruitful discussion. I anticipate the, we should be meeting in the next week or two to continue that, that process. Groundhog excavating completed a number of the sidewalks. I don't know if they're, I don't believe they're fully complete. I believe they still have a couple more places to go. But I know they did a lot of work in the downtown over the last two weeks. Also, I'm trying to work on the, some issues with the Oklahoma property. At your next, at your next meeting, you're going to get some information about the vacation of High Street. Also, I've been, I've been working with the DNR on the issues with the, with the land swap. I know I need to get some surveys, but every time I try to clarify with the DNR, it seems like they're, they must not be responding, must not be working due to the shutdown because I can't get an answer. But I'll, I'm going to continue to try, and that's all I have.
Dan, did you have something? Go ahead.
Yeah, the concrete folks are done. They came in and completed everything on the list that we wanted them to do. So they are now completed with the sidewalk work.
Cool, thank you.
I noticed, hey, Dan, did we have to, did we have to pull up some of the bricks too and relay those?
There was an area that was going to get concreted and they said, if you have bricks, we'll fix that. So we came up with some bricks and they put it back.
Yeah, I saw that. Looked nice, yep.
Julie and I have been doing a lot of walking and walking by the places they're fixing. They look pretty good.
Mike, I have one question for you regarding the wear road thing going on. Is any of that covered by our insurance or anything or not?
I can check, but I, I believe it's probably not.
Okay, I just was thinking about it the other day and it's a lot of it that could come our way.
My, my bet is no, because that landfills probably were not something covered under our insurance. And I would think under most circumstances, landfills wouldn't be covered. If I recall, when I was, when I was in my former community, we owned, we owned a property that a landfill was on and I don't believe that was covered. They, they would cover that, so, but I can look again.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mike?
No, I got one for Dan.
Go ahead.
The roof down there at the water treatment plant, that hasn't been done yet? They're going to be coming back here. They had, they had some work to do on it. I'm trying to remember what it was. But they were going to be coming back here in the spring here to finish up. What's, what you see flapping around in there, they are aware of it and supposedly that's not a problem. This is what they're telling us, so. But they had the guys check on it and talk with them and that's where we're at with that. That's the Corman Building. Yes. Okay, I thought we were putting a new roof on one of the buildings at the water treatment plant. Replacing a Ralph, I, what did we give Ralph money for then to put a roof on? Wasn't that at the water treatment plant?
That was the wellhead up on reservoir.
Okay.
All right, nothing for appointments. We'll go council comments. Cliff?
Hang in there.
Marty?
Okay. These Lowell Strong shirts. Fans in the stands, she's making them, and they're kind of fun to wear and walk around, show your support. We've got a couple ideas I'd like to run by. One, eventually we're going to open our downtowns back up. How do we do our restaurants? Because there's still going to be limited spacing inside. Maybe we can take a chapter from what Grand Rapids is allowed and has allowed and possibly letting our restaurants use some of the parking spaces or exterior spaces of their building to set up to, so they can have more tables. Because that's how they generate their money. The more tables they can turn, the more profitable they become. I know the restaurants all bought up back to parking lots. Maybe, you know, we look at giving them four spots or designating something off. I don't know how that works for their insurance, for their liquor licenses, but it'd be kind of a neat thing to just start to look at before we do start to open up. I think it'll show that we've got good support for them and we're trying to help them get back open instead of, you know, just sitting by and waiting.
Agree.
So that's something I'd like to get into a better discussion. I don't know when we're going to do it or maybe we can do it right now. I don't know.
I can start researching that. My experience is, is maybe you form some type of a licensing agreement with them to use the property.
Yeah, no
Just basically, basic, I mean, it would be no, it'd be no cost or anything. And there's, I mean, there's things you could do, but let me, let me do some research and report back to you.
Because I just know, like, at Larkins with the chili cook-off, his liquor, his beer license extends out from his property line. He, he requested that, so, you know, that's where my thinking's all coming, that if they all do that, you know, if they can gain five more tables per place than they currently can use, well, that's, you know, that's good revenue for them, so.
The places in Grand Rapids are, they usually have a little fence around them.
Barrier, yes.
Yeah. We just got, you know, snow fence and that barricade stuff, so. I mean, we could come up with something, but at least it's to show, you know, that our hearts are in the right spot. We want to see them back. Main Street dying, it's hard enough to do this down here anyway, so that was a thought I
Yeah, the biggest thing, get out and support them when they do reopen. And be there. We, we just got to do it.
Mayor, the chief has something you'd like to add?
Yes.
The biggest issue is going to be with Lara and the licensing for the bars to have their alcohol get outside. So that's something I can check on, but as Larkins with the chili cook-off, they get a special license for that one day to do it up. I don't know if Lara is going to be in a position to relax some of their standards, but I can do some checking on that tomorrow.
Yeah, but even if they did the outside ones where the alcohol never left the building, yeah, it's still giving them, you know, seats because there's lots of people that go in there with their families and they just want to eat and they have tea and pop and they're good to go, so.
Would, would the front sidewalks be enough to support a couple tables and what do you do for that? Be different than in the back?
I don't know. I looked at the front of my store today and if you set two tables up, if you had people going in and out and people walking down the sidewalk, I couldn't quite figure out the six-foot.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be concerned then too about people walking in the street if they're
Main Street is so busy.
Yeah.
You know, I mean,
And we're hoping it's packed.
They've put little, there's a little table in front of Sweet Seasons and it's pretty rare that you see anybody sitting out there and eating once in a while, but, yeah.
We're hoping it's packed downtown when the thing is restricted. So I don't want to run into a thing where we're forcing people to walk into the street and then we're impeding the traffic coming in and out. But a lot of those places butt up to pretty good sized parking lots out back anyway.
Right, and they all do, yeah, and they all do butt up to a city parking lot in the back. You know, just something I wanted to pass along, see if we can do, make it easier for them.
I like it. Uh, Greg?
Nothing, just looking for this to be hopefully on the downhill side soon and encouraging the Main Street retailers to hang in there and we'll get out and support them when this is over.
Good, Jim?
I'm good tonight, thanks.
I'm also good, so we'll go back to you, Jim.
Let's adjourn at 7:41 PM.
I'll support.
Motion in a second, Susie?
Mayor DeVeau.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzwiedel.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Campfield.
Yes.
We are adjourned.
See you Saturday.
See you Saturday.
All right, thank you.
Mike, we need to work on how we're going to get this catering done now that you're, oh, hey, Brian. Now that you're canceling our budget session, you're just going to have my lunch delivered to me then?
He's probably muted.
Yeah, I'll deliver you a sandwich, Mike.